I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees. It's February 28th, 2014. The time is 4:00 PM. And I'd ask our clerk to please call the roll.
President Self.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Dallara.
Here.
Trustee Cal.
Here.
Village manager Stiller.
Here.
Village attorney Maher.
Yes.
Village clerk Gately, also present and we are expecting.
Mr. Malina.
Mr. Malina.
Thank you very much. We do have a forum. And although it's not on our agenda, I would ask you to please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, and thank you all that are in attendance today. This is a special meeting. It was called because some of our trustees are not going to be present for our next meeting in March. And given the importance of this topic, I wanted to make sure that we could have everyone present for this discussion. You are welcome to speak during our meeting at any time. You can speak at the start of the meeting, during public comment. If you'd like to wait till later in the meeting when something in particular is being discussed, you're always welcome to speak at that time, too. I do ask, however, that you be recognized by the president and that you make your remarks from the podium so that the folks at home that are watching this later can see and hear what you have to say. So with that, our first section of the agenda is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board at this time?
I'll be first. I hope there'll be more. My name's Randy Brockway, and I live at 154 North Gate Road in Riverside. I have a child at Blais School, soon to be at Hauser, and then in a few years onto RB. So I've been working and thinking about this for over three years, and I'm doing this for her. And we hope that to be here when she goes to high school. And I'd like to have her, my daughter Lena, be able to walk and bicycle across an intersection without the fear of being hit by a car. I wanted to make three points. The first point is, we don't have a professional planner for the Village of Riverside. But I know that's changing. We're going to be hiring one. However, we're very fortunate to have Doug Pollak on the Board of Trustees. And Doug is a professional planner with over 30 years' experience. He's got a master's degree in planning from the University of Cincinnati. He's won a State of Illinois Award for the Burr Ridge Village Center Plan. And if you know that project, you know that it's pedestrian-friendly. And Doug had to work very hard to get that to be where it is today. So I'd like to thank Doug for speaking up last week, tabling, and getting us to this point today where we have an audience to address. The second point, we're going to hear, I assume we have somebody from IDOT here today, and we're probably going to hear from IDOT that we've got to move tonight. We've got to make a decision. Otherwise, we're going to lose our place in line. However, getting to this point, it's been in fits and starts. And recently, the last six months have been a real hurry-up on the part of IDOT. And there's been very little opportunity for Riverside residents, or no opportunity, to comment and to be involved. So I say, no, we don't have to accept the argument from IDOT that this project is going to be shelved, it's going to be delayed. All they have to do is instruct their consultants to come back, address our concerns, which you're going to hear tonight, and meet with us again in a short period of time. The last point I wanted to make was, this really is a unique opportunity. And it's a unique opportunity because, for one thing, it's a very unique situation. Very few multi-lane highways of this stature, 40,000 vehicles a day, separate a community from the high school. And the high school is 1,600, and most of the students reside east of Riverside, or east of First Avenue. It's 600 pedestrians a day. That's no small number. So it's really a unique situation that's found very few other places throughout the Chicago metro area, a major highway separating a town from its high school. We can do something special here. I think Mr. Pollak has suggested, trustee Pollak, that we could do something that would really be a model for the rest of the state of Illinois, and even for the country, of showing how we can make a pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly intersection out of a very difficult and unique situation that we have. So with that, I would just like to ask you to take all of this in. You're going to hear some excellent comments, I think, from the public. But we also have a professional planner on the board that I think his recommendation ought to be considered very closely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brockway. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Please.
Good afternoon. My name's Tiffany McManus. I live at 256 Black Hawk Road. I'm a graduate from RB. I have two teenage sons who went through Central, Hauser, and one is attending RB now. I think we need to carefully, carefully consider, we're using the word pedestrian and cyclists. We also have to think teenagers, children, as pedestrians, as the cyclists. Putting up, you know, this kind of stoplight, that kind of stoplight, this is great. Having a crossing guard, that's great. High schools are open all the time. They're open at evenings. Look at that Friday night. It's Friday night lights. They're going, they're running, they're going to that game. People are coming home from work. They're driving. They want to get through the light. So when we think about pedestrians, cyclists, and all of that, we also have to take into consideration their children, mostly that are crossing there. And I know that Mr. Brockway said that there's about 600. It can take just one. And if that's that one teenager, or that one child, or that one Hauser student, that, oh my gosh, my mom let me cross First Avenue to go to the game. You need to think that. We all need to think that. These are our children. So with that into, just put that into consideration, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. Anyone else at this point?
Good afternoon. Tom Sislak, 217 Herrick Road here in Riverside. As a longtime coach of cross-country running, gymnastics, track and field, still coaching, my highest priority as a coach is safety, regardless of the sport, and specifically relative to cross-country distance runners in track and field. I know that at RB, we have a very large boys' cross-country team, very large girls' cross-country team, the distance runners in track and field starting this spring right now. They enjoy coming across from the high school to Riverside to run at Swan Pond, run the various trails. And as a cross-country coach, that's always been my number-one concern when I take the runners out on a road run or to different parks. And I remember just about a year and a half ago, not too far from here, at Pale's Heights, a young boy from Lincoln Way East was a freshman on their cross-country team. And sometimes the freshmen are the stragglers in the group. And sadly, he was trying to keep up with the rest of his teammates. He was crossing at 104th Avenue and Route 33, trying to keep up with his teammates. And as he was waiting for another car to pass, he saw that car clear, then he jogged across the road, missed seeing the oncoming car from the south, was sadly killed on the spot. He was only a freshman, Lincoln Way East. And while I was researching that article to make sure the information was correct, also noticed that two weeks later, on September 30th, 2011, another freshman cross-country runner down near St. Louis also was killed trying to keep up with his teammates. And his coach, believe it or not, was only 15 feet behind him, witnessed the entire incident. So my main concern, obviously, is that we take more time to consider this increase to six lanes. And as the young lady mentioned prior to that, prior to my presentation here, that high school students, middle school students frequently are so excited, they don't take the time, the patience. They're eager to keep up with their friends. If the light is getting ready to change and some other car is coming down First Avenue, sees the light is ready to change green, they sometimes step on the accelerator, and you have a horrific situation ready to happen. I know the speed limit there is 35 miles an hour, but when I'm coaching at Riverside Brookfield, just coming to school each day, it's very rare when the light is green that cars are traveling 35 miles an hour, they're 40, 45 miles an hour. As many of us travel on 31st Street, every day we cross over a tunnel which leads from the zoo parking lot, right under 31st Street, right to the zoo, very large tunnel. We don't even know, there are hundreds of people walking under that tunnel. Every day we cross over the top of that tunnel. I know that Mr. Brockway is also recommending overhead pass. I would like to consider a large tunnel, large enough where the police squad could actually drive a vehicle through that tunnel, make it such that when it does flood, it can just be cleaned out, nothing seriously is destroyed. I think that would be a tremendous safety feature at that intersection, not only for joggers, students walking to and from school, bikers, families that are taking their children in strollers to the zoo. And I think that this present idea should definitely be researched further. I'd be willing to volunteer as a citizen to help on that committee and take additional time to search through the many different good options rather than increasing. The intersection already is dangerous. Making it six lanes is not going to make it less dangerous. So safety is my number-one concern as a teacher, coach, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sislak. Anyone else like to address the board at this point?
Good afternoon.
Bonnet.
My name is Dave Bonnet. I am a resident, 304 Maplewood Road, and have maybe a little bit of a unique perspective in that I was superintendent in Riverside District 96 for 13 years. And then I did an interim superintendency at the high school just recently for two years. And so having been a superintendent at the elementary district level, I would also point out for your consideration that 50 to 75 kids a day from Hollywood School, both Riverside and Brookfield residents, cross going east in order to access Hauser Junior High. This issue of the First Avenue crossing has been there for quite a few years. And when I was in District 96, some of the research that we had done, the Hollywood PTA and perhaps the citizens group there, maybe going back 25 or 30 years, had approached IDOT about perhaps a bridge. 10 or 15 years ago, Chuck Klinsporn and I did testify before IDOT on that traffic route and safe crossing. And so I think to have, had IDOT give this the attention that it has recently, and I would credit Randy and Peter and the village board here for moving this along, that before anything is done, let's make sure it's done right and done to the best advantage because, as I said, this has been on the drawing board for quite a long time, has been an area of concern. And so now that we've elevated it to this level, let's keep moving, but make sure that we do put together the very best plan rather than have it sit on the shelf for another 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonnet. Anyone else?
Donald Spatton, 111 Woodside. I was going to wait to speak until we saw the plan because I don't think anybody really knows what the plan is or where the extra land is going to come from, the east side or the west side. But I'd like to give you a little historical perspective. Back in the '50s, when I attended RB, they wanted, they were going, they were building, it was underway, the 294. And the original plan was to put the crosstown or what became the tollway down First Avenue. The mayor of North Riverside stopped that dead in its tracks because it split the village in half. I know that, how that happened, because I had a summer job working as a surveyor out on the 294. You know, widening this lane to six, this thing to six lanes with these lights that, you know, right lane and turn and all that, it sounds good from the traffic point of view. It's just a disaster for pedestrians. You know, further down at 22nd and I think at 26th, they have, they put on red light cameras. And people hit the brakes down there coming south on First Avenue because they don't want to get those $100 tickets, which those things just blink, blink, blink all the time. So, you know, one time, a couple of years ago, I said, gee, here you got a school. You ought to at least make these people want to stop to avoid tickets at this thing. Because there are many people, when it gets to yellow, they just speed up and go through there. I don't see how adding extra lanes is going to do anything. The best thing I heard was the tunnel idea. Of course, that's a million bucks instead of 300,000. But, you know, putting two more cars out there facing that light, I just think that's just nonsense. It isn't going to help any kid getting across there. And kids go to those games at night, you know, that's the other thing. And what Dr. Bonnet said was exactly right, I was going to mention. All those kids from that part of Riverside and Hollywood, they come to school here. They're little kids. When I was a kid, a lot of kids used to walk across the railroad bridge because the traffic was bad. Today, the traffic is 100 times more than it is now. Many times, it's stacked up past the high school with semi-trucks for Ogden Avenue going south. And it has become the crosstown expressway that was never built. So I don't think some, just some, you know, sequential lights and too little, and squeezing the lanes narrower, sounds like a, just like a terrible idea. I don't know what the plan is, but we ought to see the plan, by the way, and to study.
Thank you, Mr. Spatton. Anyone else? As I said, as we, oh, yes, sir, please.
Hello. Don Brandon, 182 North Gate, Riverside, longtime resident. A lot of you people know me from being active, whether it be at Channel 2 or active in the village many years ago. So what I have to bring to you today is that I did a story in Hoffman Estates. And the story was that a freshman went to school, made the varsity team, was very excited, was going to cross Gulf Road, Higgins Road and Gulf Road, which are two major roads as we know up in that area. And the light changed, and she wasn't going to make it all the way across, so she turned around, she didn't really look, a car hit her. Everybody had a fault in that. But when I did the news story, I was there and were taking pictures of what's, how everything's set up. And we, and I see, because I'm taking the pictures, I see that the light is timed inappropriately, or I think it's timed inappropriately. But what it turns out to be, it was timed inappropriately. IDOT didn't have a good grip on that. It was a little bit embarrassing to the police station because the police station was right on the corner where this happened. So somebody should have seen how this light was either working or not working. But regardless, we stayed with that story. We never stay with a story for two, three days unless it's really horrendous, right? And of course, when it's really bad, we can be there much too long. But we were there for five days, and we kept out finding different things. The end result was George Ryan, Governor Ryan, called the mother and said that nobody else is going to die at this intersection, there should be a pedestrian bridge. And so monies come from state reps, as we know, as has happened in the past, initiative funds, member funds come in. Things can be done and things should be viewed because here there was a median, there was the timed lights, there was the signals that flash down and count down. There were so many preventive things, but yet here you had the one incident. It's a ticking bomb, is what it is there. And we know, and we've been lucky this whole time, and we know that. And you can say that, well, you know, we're doing the best we can. Well, you really have to kind of take into consideration because we can fix it once, do a Band-Aid, we can fix it twice, or we can fix it once and be done with it. So it's going to happen sometime. Unfortunately, you know, it's just the way it is. And we've been lucky, though. We've been very lucky. So I want you to take into consideration that we can build bridges across streets for pedestrian bicycles from forest preserve to forest preserve that gets really no attention. Maybe we do a partnership with the forest preserve, we connect bicycle trails, we, you know, there's ways, there's really ways. And if you look at things and you know how to maneuver through the system, and I trust you do, you'll be able to find that way and acquire the money because it's all about money. It always is. And, you know, you say that there's, you can't put a price on life, but we do. It's called risk management. I wrote a safety manual for CBS Viacom, was produced nationwide. And there is, you know, we're going to pay somebody money in court, and somebody's going to get the blame. And if IDOT wants to keep their study secretive, then they should take all the credit or take all the blame when things fall. Because really, you're the ones who need to make the decisions. And sometimes when I hear that, that this, you can't get a study, you can't get the information, it's painful. I talked with the state rep today, you know, I would go all the way to the top. I've dealt with Speaker Madigan, I've dealt with many people, you know, so I've been lucky. But that's because I've had the opportunities to do that. I hope that you do the same thing and talk everybody you can and get it accomplished. Because I know Joe's pretty driven when he's driven, so I expect that from everybody else, too. But thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate your hard work. Nobody ever says thank you, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Appreciate that very much.
My name's Jerry Buttermer. I live on Scottswood Road. I think what's apparent this afternoon is, we all agree, it's a dangerous intersection. It's been that way for quite some time. A long while back, probably almost a decade, we recommended consideration of a pedestrian and cycle overpass. It seems to me there's two problems here. There's a traffic problem. We want to move vehicles faster. We've all got a place to go. And there's a pedestrian or cyclist problem. And they're opposite. They fight each other. The solutions are not good unless we can somehow separate. And I think at the time, what gave us the impetus to recommend the bridge then was that the zoo was engaged in a $25 million capital program. The high school was just beginning, 2004, 2005, to think about their $60 million capital program. I was sitting in Riverside thinking, God, we took our kids to that zoo so many times when they were little, but it was always in a car. Because it wasn't, who would take the chance getting them across multiple kids in a stroller at one time or kids on a tricycle? So we always drove. Now we all know what kind of parking problem RB has and the zoo, and it just, one just exacerbates the other. So it seems, it seemed to us at the time that a, an overhead separation could help. And my thought strategically was, boy, if you got kids this big, were it suddenly okay for them to ride their bikes to the zoo? How cool is that? By the time they're teenagers, you won't be an oddball riding a bike. It'd be part of the culture. And they're likely to ride their bike to high school. So those things start to work the other way and help solve the traffic and the parking and some of those problems. And I don't think there's any magic bullet for any of it. I would just ask this group, you finally have this thing elevated to a pretty high level, the county, or county commissioner. We took this plan to the superintendent at the time and the county commissioner at the time. And they said, this is great, we got the money to do it. A decade later, we're going, huh? Anybody reply yet? So you guys seem to have taken it to that level, which I think is terrific. So I'm seeing this as an opportunity. And I don't think one has to stop to allow the other or the other enhancements to proceed. I think they can be on parallel paths. And I'm not saying a bridge is an answer. I'm saying it's one option. A lot of the things that Doug recommended in an email that I read, there were multiple other options to add, too. I guess what I'm asking is, don't do something now that locks you in that precludes those things. We read the CMAP report, and I've fought for economic development since I've been in this town and know how difficult it is. But CMAP talked about gateways. And, you know, some type of symbol out there saying, this is a special place. A lot of these things could be done in and around this intersection. It's the center point between Brookfield and Riverside, the zoo, the high school, the paths that don't connect. I think it could be made to be some real, some special intersection where you're walking or driving by and you go, whoa, this is a special place. Here's one of the best high schools in the state of Illinois, here's a wonderful national landmark. So I think that, I see it as an opportunity that can help economic development, and I just ask that we don't do something now that locks us in. And thank you guys and Mike Welch at the high school and others at District 96. Finally, we're trying to get, I think, more of a comprehensive and overarching plan that will help the community in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buttermer. Anyone else? Okay, so we will now move on to the, kind of the official part of the agenda. We have before us a motion to approve a letter of intent between the Village of Riverside and the Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements related to the intersection of First Avenue and Forest Avenue, Ridgewood Road. It was tabled at our last meeting. We already have a motion and a second, so we are ready to continue discussion on the motion itself. I greatly appreciate everyone coming today, and I greatly appreciate the remarks that have been made. I think that everyone in the room shares the common interest in the safety of our children and our residents with regard to this intersection. I thought it might help if I gave a bit of a historical background to the project. We do have, the project manager is here from IDOT, who is going to be able to answer some of the questions that the trustees have once I, once I get done with this. But just to give a little background with regard to the project itself, the first time that I can find that this project in its current form was presented to the village was in June of 2011, so a little over two and a half years ago. And at that time, IDOT, actually in response to a community group that was led by Mr. Brockway, and I greatly appreciate his perseverance in helping to elevate the concerns about this intersection. And in a letter to Mr. Brockway, IDOT at that time announced their plans to And in a letter to Mr. Brockway, IDOT at that time announced their plans to eventually put in the, a, an exclusive southbound right turn lane. And at the time, Ms. Diane O'Keefe was the regional engineer in charge of IDOT at that time. And in her letter to Mr. Brockway, she, she wrote, quote, "In an effort to reduce the potential for crashes and to improve traffic signal operations at this intersection, the department recommends the installation of an exclusive southbound right turn lane along Illinois 171, in addition to the modernization of the traffic signals." So that was the first time it really got onto the, the village's radar, was in, in June of 2011, of thanks, thanks in major part to the efforts of residents within, within our community. The, the next action that was taken was in January of 2012. And at that time, the Illinois Department of Transportation announced that it was going to install left turn signals on the eastbound Ridgewood Road and westbound Forest Avenue. And at that time, Ms. O'Keefe reiterated to, to the village and to the Riverside Police Traffic and Parking Review Committee that dedicated right turn lanes would be added not only to the southbound First Avenue, but also to westbound Forest Avenue turning north onto First Avenue. And at that time, they were estimating that this work would take place in, in 2015. And at that time, our Sergeant Gutchik, who was the, the chairman of the Traffic and Parking Committee, noted with regard to, to those two turns, when there's a huge backup here, people get impatient, and people who are not familiar with the area get tied up in this and get impatient, and that's when people do stupid things. So this was again, the rationale for the, the turn lanes on both southbound and westbound. That came to fruition in February of 2012, when IDOT did install the new, the new stop, the new stoplights, the turn signals. And then they reiterated again their, their desire to have a, the southbound turn lane and the westbound turn lane. At that time, they however, said it was probably not going to happen until 2016. So it's, it had already slid a year. And then unfortunately, in June of, of 2012, Ms. O'Keefe retired from IDOT after 31 years, and the project fell off the radar and languished. And no mention of it was made even in the, the project schedule for 2013 to 2018, as early or as late as spring of last year. And what was lacking was, you know, a push to get this done. So in 2013, our state, our state representative, Michael Zaleski, who is a Riverside resident, championed this intersection improvement. And through his efforts, he was able to get Illinois Transportation Secretary Anne Schneider to come to Riverside with her team and to personally visit the intersection, and, which is kind of an unprecedented thing, to have a cabinet-level secretary come to a project site like that. But she, she did come, along with the new regional engineer, John Fortman, they did a review and at that time presented again the plan that included the right turn lane off of, both off of First Avenue and off of Forest Avenue. Mr. Zaleski pointed out at that time that there was a compelling need to attend to these matters now. And the funding for the projects, the, the overall funding for this project is about $1.2 million. The, the 300 some thousand dollar figure you heard earlier is only with regard to the, to traffic signals. But the part, the actual budget for this project is about $1.2 million. Then in July of 2013, because at the June 13 meeting, IDOT made very clear to the various stakeholders in this, that it wasn't going to proceed unless the people who were involved showed that we were ready to work together and cared about the project. So in July of 2013, Riverside hosted a meeting between IDOT, Brookfield, North Riverside, Riverside Brookfield High School, the District 96, and the Pace Suburban Bus Service, in which we talked about our efforts to join together to make sure that this project stayed on track. And at that time, IDOT again, you know, presented the plan that we have been discussing since June of 2013. This board discussed the project both in June and in August of 2013. After the meeting in July, as a result, again, thanks to Mr. Brockway's efforts, a road safety audit was ordered by, by IDOT, an independent organization that comes in, and their purpose of the road safety audit, and Ms. Pelletier can discuss this more in a few minutes, but the purpose of the safe, the road safety audit really is to take a second look with a fresh pair of eyes at a given project to see if there's anything that can be done to further enhance the safety developments at the intersection. That was done in November of 2013, and the reports that we have received is that the road safety audit supported and confirmed the plan as presented by, by IDOT. A slight side project with regard to all of this that's worth considering in the overall scope of things is the potential for having a bicycle path from Riverside Brookfield High School all the way to 26th Street. Now this is a project that predates all of us here, this, this goes back. Pelletier is here to answer any questions. Would it help if she was to give an overview of the safety enhancements? Would you just want to lead us through what the project is?
I'm happy to do that. I will apologize, I neglected to bring an over, a large-sized area to point at, and I know it's nice to have a visual, but I think we're all familiar with the intersection. I'm certainly familiar with the intersection. I don't have high school age children at this point, but I bicycle plenty and, you know, bicycle over, across that intersection, I'm familiar with it. I'm sure we're all, all familiar with it. Ben kind of stole a lot of my thunder, a little bit, as far as I wanted to give a history of the project. It was brought to IDOT's attention by a resident. This is a federally funded project that's using safety funds from the federal government. And typically, the way that we identify intersections is, you know, worst first, of course, because we have limited resources and we have an entire district that we have to apply our funds to. So it's a worst-first selection of projects. This project was not on the list prior to Mr. Brockway's request for us to review it. So it's not what we call a 5% location, so that's being in the top 5% of, of dangerous intersections in the district. I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Brockway brought it to the attention because it is an important intersection and there are some improvements that we can make to it. So our folks came out and took a look at it and did decide that, number one, traffic signal modernization is clearly needed. The, the signal equipment is out of date. Some of the things that we'll be improving with the traffic signal modernization, and forgive my nervousness, it's my first appearance on television. I'm honestly hoping it's my last. But the traffic signal modernization, we're going to upgrade all of the size of the heads, they're only eight inches right now, so they'll go up to 12 inches. They are more visible that way, there'll be LED, which makes them more visible, and they'll have a reflective backing, which again, makes them more visible. The biggest thing, the most important thing, I think, to all of you is that we're going to improve the pedestrian signals. There's new standards for pedestrian signals, there'll be countdown signal heads. There'll also be new push buttons that are, number one, come with a sign that kind of instruct its use, so then they'll be more intuitive. There is a push button per crossing, and it makes it very clear which push button is for which crossing. So that's an important pedestrian improvement there. Where, we are putting in ADA, accessible ramps at all four of the locations. I, I don't believe any of them are currently fully ADA compliant. Those will have the brightly colored tactile strips, the tiles, right at the, at the intersection, letting the visually impaired know that it's a crossing, but also it's a kind of a visual cue to the drivers as well. So putting these kind of standard cues for the drivers and for the pedestrians helps them all kind of know what to do and when to do it. And that's kind of going to be one of my mantras of the day. It's one of the basic tenets of traffic signal and traffic control design, is make sure it's standard so that the usage of certain elements are, are always consistent, so everyone always knows what to do and when to do it. So all of these, I, I know this is a special location, I totally agree with that, and there are things that can be done, including possibly a bridge or a tunnel, but not as a part of this project. And the only, and the reason I'm saying that is, again, there's a funding source and it's limited. We are already over the estimated amount, you know, what was estimated when they first scoped the project. So that's not going to jeopardize the project, but, but there is a limit. And when we request the funding, we provide a scope of the project. And we can't increase that scope appreciably and, and include things that were not made to address that. So getting back to the signals, another, there will be an uninterruptible power supply also on the signal, so if the power goes down, the signals continue to work. There is a southbound right turn lane off of First Avenue. A couple of things with regard to that is, number one, there's no turn on red when pedestrians are present currently, and there will continue to be no, no turn on red. That's been identified as, as a concern. The right turn lane, there's, there are several things, especially this one, that warrant it. Number one, there's a certain number of vehicles per hour that warrant a, a right turn lane. So this far exceeds that requirement. So there's a significant number of right turners. The other thing is the pedestrian, the pedestrian presence. One of the things that, or the, actually, I'm sorry, it's the, the preponderance of rear-end collisions. So there is a significant number of rear-end collisions at this intersection. What that is an indication of is, is congestion. So what we're trying to do is mitigate that congestion. And, and Ben hit the nail on the head, is when there's congestion, people get frustrated and they start to do stupid things. They don't think about what they're doing. And what that right turn lane does is it gets the right turners out of traffic, out of the through lanes, so that the through traffic can get through, and they don't get frustrated and try to swerve around the right turner. That's where we have side swipe type accidents. But it also kind of takes the pressure off the right turner so that they can take the time to think about what's around them, including pedestrians. I mean, that, that corner is where the pedestrians kind of congregate to pass. And it's also very busy in the morning, Ridgewood is busy in the morning, so that right turn is kind of hard to make. So what people do is, what they want to do is take their time to make that right turn. But in doing that, they kind of back up the through traffic and cause this kind of frustration on both of their parts. So that's, that's the warrant, or the reason that the right turn lane is really warranted and, and is not really just for traffic, it's for pedestrians. The same thing with the westbound right turn lane on Forest Avenue. That right turn lane actually does not, is not required by the number of right turners, but it is required because of the pedestrian crossing, because it's such a heavy pedestrian crossing on the north leg, that the right turners don't have a lot of opportunity to make their turn. So we need, and there's only one through lane. So if they're trying to make that turn, then nobody else is moving. So we want to get them out of the through traffic, allow them the time to make the intelligent decision, and also allow the through traffic to get through. In widening, in the widening of First Avenue, actually both Forest and First Avenue, we are narrowing the lanes to 11 feet. The reason for that is twofold. Number one, narrowing lanes does show to calm traffic a little bit, so that will slow the traffic down. But it also decreases the crossing, which is very important to all of us. So we are increasing both, both roadway sections by six feet. Now that six feet is probably about one second of crossing time that it takes to cross that six feet. But the 11 feet will, will help to mitigate the width and, and it will calm ta, calm traffic. Now I know there was a suggestion to go to 10 feet lanes. IDOT does not use 10-foot lanes unless it's absolutely necessary, like there is an old structure that doesn't allow anything wider. And maintenance of, so under construction, they'll allow the lanes to go down to 10 feet to give a little bit more room for the workers. But it, it wouldn't be appropriate really on this roadway because of the truck, of the number of trucks. There is a 7% truck traffic on this, on this roadway, so that's significant. All of the roadways will be resurfaced within the, the project limits, so that'll improve the pavement, pavement structure and durability. One thing that actually has, has not been highlighted, it, it occurred to me actually watching the last village board meeting, is that we are disconnecting the storm sewer under the, where we're working on the right turn lane, since we're opening up the street anyway. We are disconnecting the roadway storm sewer from the sanitary sewer. So that's just, you know, a little added benefit that we're, we're kind of doing just because we're digging in there at this point. We are maintaining the existing corner turning radii, so this is again, another kind of deference to pedestrians to make it as safe as possible, is when you, right now, they're sized for a pedestrian vehicle. So we, we use designed vehicles to show, to make the radii how big it's going to be. These, all of these, if dictated by standard, would be, a truck would have to be able to turn. So what we've done is left all of the radii at the size that they are, except for the one at the, the Ridgewood and First Avenue corner. And the reason for that, that we could not, that we're putting in a 40-foot radius basically for school buses, because it's designed for school buses. So we need to allow school buses to make that right turn. It's not, it's not why, it's not actually impacting the width of the intersection. There's, there's no net difference due to that increase in radius. So we are installing high-visibility crosswalks at all four corners. They are high visibility out there now, but they'll be thermoplastic, so they'll be very hardy. I've gone, I've gone by some that kind of just get worn off, but those are usually the painted markings, these will be thermoplastic. Ben mentioned that we are installing a shared-use path on the west side of US, of Illinois 171, of First Avenue, sorry, that will go all the way to the north driveway of the school and down to Parkview. So we're replacing the existing sidewalk south of Ridgewood to Parkview with a multi-use path. And then we're installing new multi-use path up to the driveway on the north side of Ridgewood. That's about six, so that's a 650 feet to the north is, that we're going on, on First Avenue. We're installing new pace bus pads on both corners, and they're going to be far side bus pads, so the bus will park, will stop on the far side of the intersection. That's another kind of pedestrian enhancement, is when the bus is on the near side, people get off and tend to cross in front of the bus, and then they don't see the traffic on the other side. So as a safety measure, we're moving bus, bus pads to the far side. We'll also be putting in sidewalk from Forest up to the bus pad on the northeast corner. There's been a, a couple of comments about the nighttime presence of students, and right now, the intersection is, is poorly lit. It has two mast arm lights that are really kind of oriented to the roadway. They're, they're pointing into the middle of the intersection from either corner. Those are going to be removed, and we're going to have combination lighting. So there will be one mast arm light at each corner and it will be oriented over the crosswalk. So that will give better illumination of the crosswalk. And that is, I think, the summary of the, of the improvements.
I have several questions.
Please.
One is just, I just want to make sure I understood this. So on both Forest and So on both Forest and Ridgeway, the total pavement increase is only six feet. Is that correct?
On First Avenue?
On First Avenue.
It is six feet. On Forest, it is six feet.
Oh, yeah, right. Yes. Yeah, I understood that it would be each of them, yes.
Just wanted to make sure it was clear.
And will those, you mentioned that there will still be no right turn when there are pedestrians present.
That's correct.
But will there, will there be right turn signals?
No, there will not be a right turn error.
Oh, okay. There will not be a right turn error.
No, because we want to make sure that the, that the cars are coming to a stop.
Okay.
And not having that kind of free flow.
But we will still have, and this isn't necessarily your bailiwick, but we will still have crossing guards there during the heavily trafficked times a day, right?
Yes.
So. That, one of the questions that was raised by one of the speakers was about the correct timing of the pedestrian signal. I'm presuming that there are different protocols for the different types of intersections as far as timing and such. Is that correct? How you determine the timing of a pedestrian signal?
Well, how you determine the timing for pedestrian signal is that you make sure that there's enough time for the pedestrian to get across the street, right? So what they do is they base it on a certain speed of the pedestrian. So they calculate based on three and a half feet per second, which is a 25-minute mile. This is a fairly slow pace. So there, we're being as generous, you know, as is, as we can. So it, so based on that.
And that would accommodate people with strollers and?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say the students are probably two or three times that fast, at least.
But I'm also thinking of like parents crossing to the zoo.
Right, right. That's a, they actually used four sec, four feet per second at one point, but they have reduced it to three and a half. But that, that is a fairly slow rate of speed.
And the last thing is, nothing that I've heard would preclude the consideration at some point in time, if the number's warranted and everything, of a pedestrian bridge. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say, I would say probably these improvements would occur regardless. I mean, maybe some of the pedestrian improvements would, but, you know, this will make it substantially safer for everyone, which of course was our goal. Okay. Those are my questions.
Is the stretch on First Avenue, is there a sign that says school zone? I, I know that the speed limit is 35, but I, is there a school zone sign and?
I think that there are school zone, I know that there's one at the intersection. I believe there is a, you know, a forward sign as well, regardless of whether there is one or not. We are installing one as a part of this. Actually, the signage is going to be upgrade. What's upgraded, what's out there is, is older. So we're putting in new standard school zone signs, both at the intersection and prior to the intersection.
Okay, this, this question may be more for our police chief than it is for you, but enforcement of a school zone versus enforcement of just a regular street. Are we, is the courts more strict than they are when they're driving down Agden Avenue or something like that to, to actually get a conviction and enforcement from, from an officer? So for example, you have to allow so many miles an hour before the courts even want to hear it. If it's designated a school zone, is that mile an hour, or is that more strict with the, with the court system?
It actually is the, and it's more so in the fine structure. There's an actual box on the state, State of Illinois tickets for school zone. If that school zone box is checked, judge, traffic court typically pick that charge more serious than on the 3511, part of the per cent. So they do, and typically we see that in the fine structure. They'll usually fine it higher than they would a normal speed.
So I think another component of this is obviously very good signage for the school zone, and along with your, your, your added enforcement around the village, First Avenue would, would definitely get on the radar.
Yes. I just want to make sure that it's clear that when I say it's, it's signed as a school zone, it's identified as a school zone, there is not, there's not the restrictive speed limit of 20 miles per hour. That's, that's not going to.
My, my last question is, I know the answer to this question, but I, and I think I know the answer to this question, but I just want to ask it so I feel better about it. The Landmark reported a couple of weeks ago that Brookfield got six, for, for, for $7,000. I, I drove Agden Avenue and looked at each of those six lights. Every one has the little police light on top, and I'm, you know, that, you say it's $6,900 for each one. So as, as I was processing this through and actually walking the area, I'm assuming the reason this thing is, is costing as much as it is to the villages is not so much just the enhancement of the lights, but the new poles. There will have to be new poles going out there. That, that police thing will have to be removed and then replaced. It's not just a matter of like you did in Brookfield and just went up and hung new lights.
Right. That's correct. The Brookfield, there's a couple of things actually happening there is the Brookfield, and I should say Riverside as well. Riverside has a couple of signals that, that they're having in the same program. That's a maintenance program. So it actually has a lower cost share is one thing. I think it's two and a half percent instead of 5%. And it's also, it's almost, I guess to say, it's kind of like the difference between changing the light bulb and changing.
Rebuilding the lamp.
Yes, exactly. Or getting a brand-new lamp, really.
I just want to make sure that I processed that correctly.
Right. And actually, the price in the LOI is for a brand-new EVP. That doesn't mean that we're putting in a new EVP, but, I'm sorry, Emergency Vehicle Preemption System.
It's this thing.
It's that thing. Thank you, Joe. Yeah. And this thing actually, it doesn't simply warn people that an emergency vehicle is coming. It changes the signal so that the emergency vehicle doesn't need to stop. So though we will probably simply remove and replace the existing emergency vehicle preemptions, if it's a lower price, then you're paying the lower price. The estimate, that what we have in the LOI is in, in the letter of intent is an estimate. If the prices come in lower, then you pay less.
So am I correct in this, because we are originally, we were told that this was going to be in 2015. Now I understand that, that you're planning on starting this project with the approval of board in, in 2014, this, this coming summer.
Yes. So the reason, we had said previously that it was going to be in 2015 was because we were in kind of the planning phases, so we didn't really know exactly everything that was going to be done. We actually thought we were going to need to do the roadway work in 2015. As it stands now, we think that we can get all of the roadway work done in 2014, and then it would just be, it may be under a temporary traffic signal, so that the intersection would be functioning in its final configuration. It would just have temporary traffic signals possibly for a little bit longer until, basically, the mast arms have a very long lead for order, so it takes a while to manufacture them. So those would go in last. So that's why it moved, it didn't really move from 15 to 14. It's always, it was always going to take a certain amount of time, but we're going to put the roadway work first to kind of get it out of the way and get it functioning. But you are also correct that it had previously been in 2016, before, before it was accelerated.
And, and the reason I bring that up, and the trustees had this before them, the next thing that we're going to be talking about in this meeting is, is giving approval to the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District to do the, the first part of their, the relining of the interceptor sewer that's, that's in this location. And they are asking permission to be able to do that work between now and August, which would allow them to do the interceptor re, the dropping of the shaft for the relining before August, so that they don't have to come back at a later time and then tear up all of the, all of the, the fresh work that has, that has then been done by IDOT. And that, that was another reason for trying to move this forward today. Further questions or comments by the trustees? Mr. Paul?
Thank you. I've got a few, several questions I'd like to ask Theresa, and I appreciate IDOT being here, and I also appreciate the board delaying this from last Thursday's meeting when this first, or when we were first asked to consider this letter of intent. And also thank all the residents who showed up on very short notice to attend today's meeting. I guess I would preface, preface my comments or questions by stating that I, I know that we all know this, but it's worth repeating. One of the greatest attributes or greatest things about Riverside is the ability of our kids to walk to school. When I brag to my siblings and friends and relatives from out of town or other parts of Chicagoland area, that's the first thing I always mention is, hey, guess what? My kids get to walk to school. And they, they all, of course, ride the bus. So that's why this is so important to me. And being a parent and, and talking with other parents over the years, they've always talked about this intersection and how, how scary it is for, for students. And we have residents on both sides of First Avenue, as well as Houser students and R and B students who are impacted. You know, the idea of a bridge or a tunnel, boy, that would solve everything. But that's not what's before us now. That's not what we're, we're being asked to consider. So, and whether or not that is doable, that, that's for another day. And certainly, we could continue that fight in the future. But I do have some questions. First of all, I wonder how the accident reports at this location compare to other intersections along First Avenue? Is this the worst intersection along, between 290 and I-55? Or how, how does it compare?
It, it's not, it's not the worst. Actually, 31st Street has slightly more accidents.
Okay. Also, I.
Just for clarification, that's.
Car with car, right? That's not a pedestrian, hitting a pedestrian. I would have to look at that Grinch data again.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a good explanation for this, but I noticed in the plan itself, at a couple of locations, it talks about the total city slash village portion, $289,000. Does that mean? I know we're not being asked to spend that much money, but.
Well, that is actually in the letter of intent. And what that is, is we did a lighting assessment of the intersection. Typically, when you light an intersection, you want to have also transition lighting. So that would be for transition lighting. Unfortunately, IDOT does not pay for transition lighting on, or lighting on arterials. So that becomes a local cost. And that's a policy issue, and, and that is something that you, you can choose not to have.
Okay, so we're, we're not being asked to approve that amount?
You are not, yeah.
But if we do want the lighting to be sufficient based on modern standards, we would need to spend that amount. Is that fair to say?
Um, if you wanted transition lighting, yeah, into the intersection.
Transition lighting is basically the two lights that are there now that are combat, that we're taking up.
No. Transition lighting would be lighting both sides of the intersection for some length.
Okay, but it, but under the, under the proposed plan, there is more lighting at that intersection now than there is currently?
That is correct.
Without any transition lighting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There will be more lighting, and it will be more pedestrian-oriented lighting.
So the transition lighting extends from the intersection along First Avenue?
Correct. Right. Along First Avenue and Ridgewood and Forest, actually.
And that is something that the Village Board can consider at a later date as we, we start to look at the CMAP plan and deciding what type of light standards that we might incorporate into the downtown that we can then push out towards First Avenue.
Sure.
And that was primarily the reason why staff did not recommend funding that portion of, of the letter of intent.
Okay. Then I, I've got a series, a list that I've kind of created just based on my own experience working with civil engineers on designing pedestrian crossings and some features that are commonly found in, for pedestrian crossings, some of which you've answered, a couple of them you've addressed already. But I think there's some other things that I'm curious as to if they could be incorporated into this plan, and if not, why not? I guess first, and some of these are real simple, some not so simple. First, I would ask, advance yield or stop bars. In other words, stop bars that are further away from the pedestrian crossing than is the standard, so that pedestrians and motorists have a little bit more of a buffer zone.
Right. So earlier, I talked about user expectation, the roadway user expectation, what they expect. And moving the stop bar further back, although we know intellectually that that's where you stop, if you move it further than where people expect it, they tend to not stop there, really, and then just end up at the crosswalk, and really even closer to the crosswalk, because they're almost using the crosswalk as the stop bar.
Okay. There was some talk about the timing of pedestrian signals. Does, would you set the timing to provide a leading pedestrian interval or an exclusive pedestrian phase? And you probably know what those things mean, but others may not. Leading pedestrian interval is basically where, when the lights transition from red to green, there's maybe three to five seconds where they're all red and pedestrians can start walking. So they get a head start, and studies have shown that that works, that it makes it safer for people crossing the street to have that interval. Of course, an exclusive pedestrian phase is easy to, to understand, it's where they actually, everybody stopped and the pedestrian. And I'm talking about school hours primarily. Can something like that be done during school hours?
Well, an exclusive pedestrian phase, just from the sheer volume of, of traffic that needs to get through the intersection, and unfortunately, those, you know, the pedestrian peak hour usage and the vehicle peak hour usage is the same. So it's, it's going to, to some extent, defeat the purpose of trying to decrease the congestion in order to increase safety, because it will be increasing the congestion significantly by adding that. We do have, it's a 30-second pedestrian crossing light for across 17, across First Avenue, which is more than adequate for getting across. As far as the, the lead pedestrian, we don't have a lead pedestrian signal, but what we have, we do have the three-second all red. And what that allows the pedestrians to do is actually clear the intersection. So it just gives them that little bit more time, because a lot of pedestrians will kind of, will push it a little bit. So that'll give them the extra time to get out of the intersection.
You mentioned the curb radius. What, what are the curb radii?
I believe on Ridgewood, on, on, I think it's on the east side, they're both 25, and on the southwest side, it's 30. And then the north, the northwest side will be 40.
So the northwest will be 40, the northeast?
So, sorry. Northwest is, will be 40.
40.
Southwest will be the same as it is.
Which is?
Which I believe is 30.
Okay.
And then the two on the east side will be 25.
Okay.
And I might have confused one of those. I can check a plan and just confirm that.
The minimum is 25.
But the smallest is 25. Yeah.
Typically, for pedestrian crossings, it's better to have something even smaller than that, at least in my opinion, but I know that, that, that can be argued.
And sometimes, if you have too small a radius, I mean, those are designed, those are pedestrian, those are designed for a passenger vehicle.
Right.
So when the radius is too small, the vehicle just ends up driving over the curb. So that's.
Or having to go slower.
There is a limit to how, how small a radius it can be.
Right, right. What about, you know, one of the concerns that, that someone described to me, in fact, someone said to me, you know, you ought to have that Village Board meeting at the intersection and let everyone stand there and experience how, how scary it, it really is. So even when you're not crossing the street and you're just standing there, it's, it's intimidating. Are there bollards or anything you could put in to protect pedestrians, students, while they're waiting to cross?
We've, the suggestion of bollards has come up in the past for, for other intersections. And our biggest concern. And our biggest concern with bollards is that it kind of clutters the intersection. So you have these four-foot-high, maybe, you know, six-to-eight-inch concrete-
Yeah.
-tubes at the intersection. And if you're going to put them sufficiently close together that they actually protect the pedestrians, what you end up doing is obscuring the pedestrians, especially those of smaller stature. So, you know, the smaller you are, the easier it is to hide behind them or get lost behind them, as well as it's harder to see. So you're obscuring the vision of the pedestrian who's looking for a car and is worried about the cars, but you're also obscuring the vision of the driver from seeing the pedestrians. So really, what we try to do is provide kind of the clearest intersection possible to really give everyone the vision to see what's going on, to be able to react to what's there.
Also, having teenagers, I can tell you what they will do if there are bollards there.
Stand on them?
Absolutely. And they will be falling into the intersection, absolutely.
Would, what about similar but different? I find, you know, in our downtown, and you see it all over, the pedestrian, the portable pedestrian crossing vertical, would we be allowed to put those in the center during school crossing times?
I think that it's something you could request from our, I think it would require a permit.
Yeah.
So you could request it from our permit division. The only concern I can think of of something like that is it can become a projectile if it's not-
Yeah.
And I wonder if a truck going down, just the sheer power wind of the truck would shift that. I mean, they're heavy, but-
Yeah.
I've been bounced off the road in my car.
Right.
Yeah. They're not really designed for this application. Let's say, you know, they're designed for more of a dense area like the downtown.
Have you seen where they've, I know you'll see on the highway where they have the plastic that are permanently attached to the ground, but if a car hits them, they just flop over. They don't come, become detached. They just flop over. I'm just thinking that some type of vertical warning, something that gives people the sense that, you know, to slow down.
Yeah. Are you talking again in the middle of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've seen that application in traffic control for construction.
Yeah.
I don't know that I've seen it necessarily. I've seen it for bike lanes where it's more of a delineator.
Right.
I don't know that I've seen it in this application. Certainly, I don't think the district does it as a standard, but, you know, again, if that was something that Riverside was very interested in, they could apply for a permit.
And I think, excuse me, I think a lot of this has to do with enforcement because I think First Avenue is, it's a creature of habit. It's the same people kind of go up and down First Avenue. They're either, you know, their trucks coming from one way or another, and they're the truckers that know that First Avenue is better than Harlem, or and they're people that live in different things. You know, with proper signage of schools and intense enforcement, it's not going to take long before they start slowing down. I mean, it's not going to take long at all when you get a $150 or $200 ticket for that. Doesn't take, doesn't take long to click in.
Well, I'll follow up on that. That's my next bullet, bullet item.
I'm here for you.
It is a school zone.
It is.
And typically, in school zones, people aren't allowed to go 35 miles per hour during school hours. Can the speed limit be reduced?
So typically, what you see is a 20 mile an hour speed zone, right, for school zones. And those are used specifically for crossings or areas where there are children crossing that are not controlled by a traffic signal. So we would not be able to apply a 20 mile an hour speed limit to First Avenue.
What about 25?
I'm sorry.
I'll negotiate for anything.
Right. Take what you can, right? Get what you can. It's 35 now. Changing, changing the speed limit requires a speed study. I'm sure that a speed study was done in order to do that. So that's what would be required. I don't, I think that that speed was identified as kind of slowing the vehicles somewhat, but if you slow them too much, again, you're going to kind of create that rear-end collision concern.
Well, I know in downtown La Grange, where a major arterial goes through, they, I think it's 25 through there. It's completely different environment with the downtown and all that. But they got me thinking, you know, is there, can we reduce the speed limit? You know, the signal being there doesn't give me much comfort in terms of the speed of the traffic. What about advanced warning lights and signs? I mean, there's, you said you thought there was a school zone sign. I didn't see one there. I saw a pedestrian crossing sign, unlit.
Right.
But nothing about a school zone. I'd like to see a flashing beacon several hundred feet or a couple hundred feet north and south that is active during school crossing times.
So we, going back to the standard being, you know, trying to remain, to be standard so that everyone knows what to do and when to do it. We use something called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And that's really kind of our bible for that, for this type, for the application of traffic signs and signals and control devices. And that manual specifically indicates that flashers, and there's another suggestion that I think that you had made, I read it maybe in the newspaper is the, or in your email, is the impavement lighting. So both of those options are specifically for mid-block crossings. So again, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use it in this application because drivers are going to see that and think that there's a pedestrian crossing there at, you know, in mid-block where the beacon is, and that's not what's occurring. So in the case of the beacon and then, you know, in the case of the, of the impavement lighting and even having a beacon at the traffic signal, because people are used to traffic signals, to add more flashing lights, I mean, a flashing yellow light at an intersection means a specific thing. And it just adds clutter and confusion to the intersection. So it's not, it's not something really we could even consider mostly because it's specifically-
And the new traffic standards for those warning signs are much more reflective than the current ones.
Right. Yes.
They're moving away from the yellow towards a more of a lime green. And I've seen them. You don't miss those. And unfortunately, we do have a number of other school zones here that have those outdated ones that we will be replacing the Village Board. So people are, I'm waiting for when that first lime green sign goes up in the column I'm going to get, so.
Would IDOT be willing to put speed indicators, like, you know, the LED sign that tells you how fast you're going?
Actually, that is not something that IDOT puts out. I think that we, the Village of Riverside has those indicators.
I know we do, but I'm asking if IDOT would be willing to do it.
I think that those are typically put out by the jurisdiction, by the local, the locality. And I don't, I don't, I can't think of a reason. I don't think that IDOT would necessarily be averse to having them out at, you know, periodically. I think it might, again, require a permit. Unfortunately, we, we need a permit to do anything in the state right-of-way, but, you know, I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
And you, you mentioned the width of the lanes. I know the federal highway standard is 10 to 12-foot lanes for an urban arterial. You're saying the IDOT standard is 11 feet, with exceptions you've granted.
Right.
Can we get 10-foot lanes?
Well, this is not an urban arterial. It's not considered an urban arterial because of the level of density of what's around it. It's really, it's, you know, you don't feel that density. So no, we wouldn't want to go down to 10 lanes. I don't, I don't, I don't think it would be safe. This is actually a strategic regional arterial, which is a system of roadways that's been identified. It was kind of as a result of, it's for basically 9/11, is they established certain routes were established for moving traffic quickly when necessary. So it's a strategic regional arterial and a principal arterial.
Well, I thank you for answering the questions. It sounds like a lot of, you know, you're relying a lot on the standards that IDOT has, which are very good standards for moving traffic. I still am concerned that, you know, I know traffic engineering is evolving and there's more and more emphasis on complete streets, on safety, on pedestrian and multimodal facilities. I'm sensing that this intersection is being designed primarily for cars. And that's just my own, I'm sure you don't agree with that, but that's my own sense of it. And I really would like to see us work a little bit harder and see what we can do to make this safer for students and pedestrians in general. I really do think that this intersection needs to be a model for pedestrian safety. It's, to me, this is as big of a safety problem as we have in this village. And I just feel like we're kind of rushing through this and not, not giving it, you know, not considering some of these features that could make it better. Thank you.
Doug, I just, can I, I just want to respond to that to say that IDOT is considering all users when they're designing their roadways. That's their policy. And it's also the law because complete streets is the law and we follow that. That's actually, the pedestrian paths are partially, you know, due to that. We're also using national, it's not just IDOT standards. We're using standards that are widely accepted throughout the United States. The Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is actually a national manual, not an IDOT manual. And I can unequivocally say that this intersection will be safer after these improvements are done. And many of the things that you're considering, Doug, really could be implemented, you know, afterward. And that's something that, you know, that we could work on and see if we could do.
I appreciate that. I'd like to see them incorporated into the plan, though, before we give it the final go-ahead, I guess is what I'm saying, rather than let this go ahead and then figure out, you know, what we can do after the fact.
Other questions?
I'd love to respond to Doug. Doug, I understand what you're saying, and I think people in, here in the audience and the trustees recognize that there are large, that a bridge or a tunnel or something like that may be something that we want to move toward. But I think that I personally don't want to say no to making what is actually more than an incremental improvement. This is, what we hear is, is an improvement in safety. I don't want to say no to this opportunity because we think that it can be better. We always know we're striving for perfection. We always know that we can all, as soon as we make up our minds about something, somebody's going to give us a better option for doing it. But I, I can't agree with what you're saying. I think that the federal government through IDOT is giving us an opportunity to improve safety at that intersection for at least a dozen reasons that we've all talked about here. And has also said, for, for instance, some of the traffic, the speed signs, that we may in fact be able to do that if we go for a permit. And I don't think that we should say no to this. I don't think we should say, you know, I don't, I don't think that striving, I think you can get in trouble when you say, I'm striving for perfection, so I'm going to say no to something in the meantime. I think that this is an opportunity. We recognize it's the beginning of something to lead to increased improvements, and I'd like to see us do it.
Doug, I really want to, I agree with what Jean says 100%, but I, one of the things I would like to say is I appreciate what you did last, the last meeting by bringing, by putting this on hold, or at least starting it, and trustee Pat.
Trustee.
Because, you know, I, I think we should, you should have been here Thursday. We should have had this conversation when we had this on the agenda. I learned a lot more in the last week, and I think this has been very, very helpful. And a lot of the, a lot of people, starting with, you know, Randy and finishing with Jerry, I mean, and even, the answer to this is not only pedestrian safety and automobile safety, is a bridge. That will really make this intersection strive for perfection perfect. And this, I don't think this is something that should be, you know, thought of that we can achieve it because we haven't been able to achieve it in the last 20 years. We have a bond referendum that's coming up. We want to put this on it? We could put this on it. We have a school board that is interested in working with us. Maybe District 208 would come in, you know, get involved. We have a zoo. This right turn lane benefits the zoo and the school more than it benefits a lot of the residents of Riverside. So, I mean, we're spending money trying to make this place safer, make those, you know, make the school better, make the zoo better. And, you know, this is a time for us all to get together, and maybe we can make that bridge a reality. And I think this is, I think that's where we should, we should, that's the next step, the bridge and this walking path. Can you see North Riverside children actually be able to get to school, you know, without having to get driven here? That would be fantastic. We get North Riverside involved, get Brookfield involved. Further comments by the trustees? Any questions or comments from the folks in attendance? Mr. Spatney?
I, well, should we just stay up here and, could you just tell me how many cars can load in this right turn lane on Forest going west? How many cars is it accommodating?
Are you talking about the one on Forest?
The one on Forest.
How far? The lengths?
Yeah. How many, how many, how far back toward the river does that extend? How many cars? I've never seen any cars. Are there little islands? Do they, do they cross this lane and then get on an island and then cross Forest? Nobody's seen a drive. I don't know what we're talking about here. Same thing, how many cars can load into the South Platte, First Avenue right lane you're going to construct? Because I think what all it's doing is, you know, when those cars take that right turn, they're essentially entering the parking lot in front of the school in the morning. And you're just moving it to the back, fully up the road.
Wait, I-
This is, this is absent grade separation between pedestrians and cars doing essentially nothing and spending a couple hundred grand out. You've got to separate pedestrians and not have them cross that corner. It's, it's going to happen, no question. Somebody said it's going to happen. It is going to happen. And semis many times come bouncing to a stop and block the whole block of intersection there. Then they have to pull through. You know, you've got litter time, and you've got kids huddling and trying to get across. This is nonsense. I mean, you know, if you go look at 55th Street in front of Hysdale High School, they put up a chingling all the way along there, and they have a stop sign in front of Belcomese or whatever that cavern is there. Now, there's a four-later that's going right past in front of the high school, same situation. And it's a real big problem because of the turning, right, and going down there. Moving these lanes in there, you know, now, now the kids have to cross six lanes. Ninety percent of the kids cross from the North Platte to Forest Avenue. Very few cross on the South side. And you're going to have these two right turn lanes mixing it in. It's just kind of amazing.
Mr. Brockler?
Yeah, I had a couple comments.
Can you step up a little closer to the mic so that everybody at home can hear?
Maybe for Ms. Pelletier, in, I don't necessarily need a long answer, but this roadway safety audit that was conducted back in November, that is not, has not been available to the village, has not been available to District 208 or to District 96 as it was promised. There would be reports made to us. There would be reports made to us. So I'm concerned with that. And I know some of the other people that I speak to find it rather ludicrous that we had a public roadway safety audit and we had numerous professionals out in the field for 10 days and we cannot read that report. I find that to be unacceptable. Now, what I'm also hearing is, is that you keep mentioning standard, the standards and the, we're taking a standard approach to a very unique situation. This is a unique site here. And all I'm hearing is it can't be done, it can't be done. You know, this is not, it's not an IDOT standard. Well, this is not a standard intersection by any means, by any, I would like you to address the fact that the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, on their website and in talking to two of their local representatives, one in Manuka, one in Chicago, that they recommend a pedestrian safety island for any multi-lane highway over 15,000 vehicles a day, 15,000, when there are pedestrians present. And we have certainly a lot of pedestrians present here, we know that. Well, our vehicle count is 39,000 vehicles a day. And although the National Traffic, Highway Traffic Safety Administration does not have veto power over IDOT, it is a strong recommendation and it's one based on a lot of research by masters and PhDs in traffic safety throughout the country. So I, if I could maybe just finish with a few more comments, I really like what I'm hearing about the bridge. You know, this all started three years ago with, with the idea of a bridge. And we've had pushback on several fronts. It's not going to look good. It's, people are going to throw stuff off of it. This does not need to look like the Eisenhower pedestrian bridges. This could be something very special, like Jerry Butterman says, could be a wonderful gateway. A pedestrian bridge, when we looked at it three years ago, was about $3 million and that's constructed, okay? That's, we're not talking $10 million, we're not talking $15 million, we're talking about $3 million. Now, what I'm hearing is that $1.2 million are going to be spent on concrete and signaling improvements. So we're spending quite a bit of money, we're almost spending a third of the way to get to the bridge and we're not going to really realize much safety benefit to the pedestrian and bicycles. That's my opinion, okay? But they do make these prefabricated clear span bridges now that can go 100 feet or more, one span. They make them out of Corten steel. So they're not an ongoing maintenance obligation as we might see the bridge, the swinging bridge out here, as we might see that has to be painted every couple of years. These Corten steel bridges can go 25 years without essentially much maintenance. So I like what I'm hearing about the bridges. I would hope that this would really be the start of a new conversation and a new discussion about that. I would just like to comment on two other things. You mentioned that the truck traffic was about 70 percent or 7%. Well, 7% of 40,000 vehicles a day, and we're roughly 40,000, 39,200, is about 7,000, 7,500. I'm pretty close there. And the trucks, as IDOT...
It's 28,000.
I'm sorry, 7,500?
No. 7% of 40 is about 28,000.
It's less than 10%.
Okay, all right. All right, all right. So it's about, I'm sorry, it's about 35, 3,500.
A lot of trucks.
These, these are not, these are not box trucks. These are not pastry trucks. These are, as IDOT identifies them and as they count them, these are multi-axle, these are semis, okay? And as we all know, semis do not stop on a dime as some of the smaller vehicles might. There was also a comment made about the number of traffic accidents. Now, I understand that the traffic accidents that are reported to Springfield have to have a certain level of damage, a certain level of vehicle damage to be reported. Otherwise, they're not, they don't have to be reported to Springfield. So with that in mind, I would, I would just look to Chief Weitzel and say, how many accidents actually occur at this intersection and how many of those that occur are reported to Springfield?
Currently, that's actually not true. You have to put a dollar on over or under 500 on the state accident reports. We still send them all into IDOT. Then IDOT does their own classification. But the local municipality police department is obligated to submit every single accident report. And the ones that we did, we did a five-year study we submitted to IDOT as part of this study that started in July in 2011. They asked for a five-year accident study. So that information was submitted with the report that came back to the plant. And like was sent by the IDOT speaker, a majority of the First Avenue accidents, not Ridgewood and Forest, are rerouted.
So as our chief public safety specialist or Mr. Scolera, you're the top public safety specialist, you're the number two, are you both confident in what we're doing here is not, not that we're striving for perfection? I don't think we're doing that. I think we're settling for a mediocre solution. And I would, I would ask both of you to comment.
I support the project. I believe that the project as proposed will improve safety for that intersection.
Okay. And Mr. Chief Weitzel?
I first would say that Peter's my boss, so I call him number one, you're number two. But as far as law enforcement goes, I think it's a dramatic improvement. And I would say that from interviewing our crossing guards that are there, talking to the school superintendent and his staff, talking to the zoo staff and talking to my own staff that's up there every day, either at dismissal time or at drop-off time. And the improvements that were outlined by the IDOT representative, I think will make the intersection safer undoubtedly. Will it be to the point that it's perfect? No, there is no, there's no perfect. But I think it's going to be a dramatic improvement, both for pedestrians and vehicles.
And it, and it lays the groundwork for further partnership with IDOT as well as other local agencies that we can hopefully one day maybe achieve either an overpass or underpass. But a lot of the improvements that IDOT is suggesting here would, will have to happen if we ever do get to that point where we're putting in a bridge or underpass. So we are kind of addressing that now and continue to work towards that other goal.
One last question for, we have two attorneys sitting here. I don't know if this is an appropriate thing, but I've often said a number of things that are inappropriate in public meetings. How, how do you feel about defending the village on a accident lawsuit that involves a child? You know what's going to happen. I'll just stop talking in a second, but they will sue the village, they will, the, they will sue District 96, District 208, they'll sue IDOT most likely, they'll sue all parties. Now, we may not lose, but we have to defend ourselves. And how much is going to be spent in one defense? And I'll let you answer that.
Well, I don't think that's a fair question to the village attorney because the village attorneys are really representing the village board here. So that, if you're going to ask that question, it should be directed towards the village. And I think we are taking reasonable steps to make an improvement to the intersection. As Chief Weitzel stated, is it the perfect solution? Probably not. I think ultimately we have to take what we have here now and work towards that perfect solution. But at this point in time, I believe this is the perfect solution to address a number of the concerns that have been raised by both crossing guards and our police department in, as well as the districts in, who utilize that intersection. So I believe we are doing the, the best thing possible to address safety now.
Ms. Sussman?
No, I was going to call the vote actually.
Anything else? Hearing no further discussion, we have before us a motion to approve a letter of intent between the Village of Riverside and the Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements related to the intersection of Illinois 171, First Avenue and the Forest Avenue and Ridgewood Road. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Powell?
No.
Trustee Bowery?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Pelletier, thank you for coming and answering our questions. We greatly appreciate it.
Make a statement?
Of course.
Well, first, I want to thank everybody for, for spending the additional time delaying this. I learned a lot. I feel a little bit better about it after hearing from Ms. Pelletier today. I think she gave some very good answers, some very good responses. And I'm glad to hear, you know, for the first time, you know, from others and their reasons for supporting the project. So I really do appreciate that. I would have liked to have voted yes just for harmony's sake or for, you know, for consensus. I always appreciate what my fellow trustees' opinions are on these matters, but I just felt like it would be good for the record to show that there was some concern, you know, that's on the record with my no vote. I'm hoping that if nothing else as a result of this, we can move this maybe near the top of our list of strategic goals, a bridge. You know, some of the other items I mentioned that were said, you know, that the village can do, like the additional lighting, the, the speed indicators, things like that, that maybe we can do on our own. And, and so, so, yeah, I appreciate this process if, if for nothing else it's drawn attention to this and hopefully we can spend some more time on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
There has been a little future think here. And as a school superintendent for many years, survival meant trying to outthink adolescents and little kids. The idea of a bridge versus a tunnel. Now, I'm thinking of a kid standing at that intersection, will they take the extra effort to climb up those stairs and escalate 15, 20 feet, go across this bridge and then go back down versus perhaps on a skateboard, sliding under a tunnel? You think about it and if you're going to invest a little thought and time and money into planning one versus the other, I would opt for the tunnel rather than the bridge in terms of what a kid actually is going to use. Just a little food for thought. Sorry for the interruption.
No interruption at all. You're always welcome. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a motion to approve a resolution granting the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District a variance to operate outside the permitted construction hours of the Village of Riverside for the relining of the Salt Creek to Intercepting Sewer located at First Avenue and Forest Avenue, Ridgewood Road. Mr. Scolera, would you like to introduce?
Sure. This item before the village board is a result of the previous item, that being the planned work for the intersection of First and Forest Avenue. Upon learning of the project, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District viewed this as an opportunity to complete the first phase of a probably multi-year project that will be taking place later involving their 21-inch interceptor line, which runs right through that intersection. As part of the project, they have been in contact with IDOT. And in order to have the MWRD complete the work necessary for Phase One and meet the August 1 deadline imposed by IDOT, they would need a variation to the village's construction work hours in, to allow them the ability to begin work beginning May of this year and concluding by August 1 of this year for a drop shaft that would be put in place so that when they return at a future date, they will have minimum impact on disruption to parkway and traffic in the area. We do have a representative from the MWRD who is available to answer any questions that the village board may have. But as I said, this is a, a result of the project that is being proposed by IDOT for the intersection.
So I'd ask for a motion in a second to approve. Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Collins. Discussion, please. Any questions?
Makes sense to me.
I guess I have one question. Is, are we comfortable that working outside the hours will not impact any residents?
Well, the, the area that, that the work will take place, there are some residential homes that are in proximity to the work area. I think the MWRD, and you might want to speak in regards to that, they will have, they will notify those individuals of the start date of the project as we will through our eFlash and website. There may be some noise that they will hear during some, some of the construction period, yes. So it will have somewhat of an impact on, on residential units in that area.
Is there a time limit? Are we granting this variation for specific period of time?
It is a 24-hour work period.
Well, I mean, starting June 1st to August 1st.
May, I would probably say May to August.
Is that in the resolution or in the...
No, it's not. You could make that part of it.
Part of the motion to specify a certain time period so that it expires.
Could you maybe speak as far as timeline?
If you could introduce yourself, please.
Realistically, it will begin...
Sir, can you introduce yourself first?
Anthony Zogus, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District in the sewer design area of our, of our office. Realistically, the work would begin mid, sometime in May. And our completion date is actually September 1st now. So from the time they start until September 1st is when we are designating the work to take place. And we're putting a completion date of September 1st. So we, the 24-hour request would be for that full period of time. It's not, but giving the request to them doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to work 24 hours. It costs them more to actually do off-hour work. But with the short period of time that we have for construction to get done before IDOT, giving us the ability to work 24 hours would give us as much opportunity as possible to be complete. So just because we have the, the variance doesn't mean they're going to necessarily use it, but it's there for them if they need to.
So it would become dependent on how far behind MWRD falls on the project. They'll probably work during normal construction hours, but if need be, as they get closer to the expected end date, they may need have some periods where they'll have to work after hours.
And I assume you're going to be coordinating this effort with, with IDOT, correct?
Yeah, we, everything is per IDOT standard in the road because the work is actually in First Avenue, so.
And they currently have a permit application in with IDOT to allow them to do this work. So, and Village would, would stay in contact with both MWRD... So, and village would, would stay in contact with both MWRD and IDOT as the project progresses.
So, should the resolution that's in here currently references the August 1st date would change to September 1st?
And this is seven days a week?
Yes.
Isn't it?
It is for seven days a week.
It does. Doesn't it? It does. It is seven days a week.
I'm not positive about that, but I, there might be, there might be some language in there dependent on what village ordinances are, maybe regarding Sunday work or weekend work, but...
Right. The MWRD did not provide a template resolution. The resolution that's been drafted is basically, it provides the MWRD flexibility to work 24 hours. And I, when I drafted it, I, I did it so that I gave you the month, the start month and the end month with the understanding that 24 hours meant that they, they may, doesn't necessarily mean they will, but they may need to work all week or for a 24-hour period.
So, do I hear an interest in within the resolution changing it to September 1st? Is that what you were suggesting?
How much of a problem would be, would it be to restrict it to six days a week?
Well, currently, we allow construction seven days a week.
Right.
No, we don't.
Yeah, you do.
We do, all right. But not in, no, we do, but not through the night.
Right.
You know. So, so, so even saying that prohibited from 10:00 PM on Saturday to 10:00 AM on Sunday or something like that. Peter, you're not looking at me right now.
Well, I, I think a lot of it, understanding how the construction will work.
Yeah.
If, if you're going to have someone working there on a Sunday, you're going to be paying them a lot more than you will be paying them on a Monday at a regular time. So, I, I believe the MWRD will make every effort possible to, to complete as much work as possible during normal construction hours. They just want this flexibility, like I said, in the event that they start, if the project is taking a lot longer than they anticipated, to kind of make that time up. And I think they are going to try their very best to limit the 24-hour work period as much as possible.
I only bring it up because when District 96 was doing the construction, we had, and there, the people that lived across the street are next door, actually.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm sure you can...
Yeah.
So, trying to avoid complaints.
And the village actually, because this project was, was to be done, I think, a year or two ago. And the village at that time did grant the MWRD a 24-hour work period permit. And that project was actually going to be coming all the way down Forest Avenue.
Yeah, I remember that.
This one is going to be concentrated to just that intersection. And I think from looking at the plans, the cuts are going to occur on First Avenue where the turn lane will eventually be, a portion on Ridgewood, and then there's a portion on the forest end as well, so.
Well, no, this work is just actually the First Avenue. We have, we have a, there's a, we have three intercepting sewers that meet in a junction chamber right underneath First Avenue.
In the middle of it?
In the northbound lanes, just north of Forest.
Oh, okay, on the northbound lanes, north of Forest.
Yes, like right...
So, it's really not in front of the homes on Ridgewood?
No, I mean, it's kitty corner, but, I mean, it's still the intersection.
But you will hear the noise when it's breaking.
Yeah, that's summer.
Well, I wanted to accommodate this and all this, but again, I want some assurance that a resident's not going to go two, three weeks not being able to sleep at night, or even two or three days not being able to sleep at night. So, I mean, if you're comfortable in saying that that won't happen, I'm okay with it.
I, I wouldn't want to commit to saying that, but the purpose really, as, as Artin said, is to give the contractor the opportunity to have as much time as possible to, to do what they need to do from May to September is really not a lot of time. It's a really tight schedule. So, having a 24-hour allowance gives them the flexibility, if needed, to come in and do work that they otherwise wouldn't be able to do until the next day. So...
Okay. Any further questions, comments?
I was just going to say, I don't know that it's going to be much louder than the traffic on First Avenue.
Well, that's a good question. How loud is it?
I...
Decimal rate.
Okay. All right.
Well, I think it's until the, the street is open, once the street is open, some of the other work is dropping the, the shaft into place and then connecting it to the line.
The lining is going to be taking place on a later date.
Right. But what, you're going to be dropping in the shaft...
Yeah, we have to build the shaft down.
...that will connect to the lines.
It allows them access to, to do the work they need to do in the future, but...
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Bowery?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We do have a need for an executive session to discuss the sale of real property owned by the Village of Riverside. So, there will be no final decisions made during, or action taken during that session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn, not to reconvene.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second. By Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Bowery?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
No.
Trustee Bowery?
Aye.